We have eight total now.
We two, two.
Two six was, I had two, yeah. Okay. Hopefully, six weeks, we have to push it, push it one year, but hopefully, we have to get by. Ever since we see a bunch of black roses out there, we got none of them.
Yeah.
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 We're in the group at the same age, you know, there is.
Yeah, perhaps you expand and we have kind of a prime, they can see those to that property because our backyard. Uh, there's a couple of them.
We next thing we've got here.
I mean, it's nice and old.
It was so.
You're not.
Uh, it's hope it becomes like a nice place for visitors or a little school. Brett's, uh, dad got run off the road, some traffic coming out. I got a road being way out.
Yeah.
The little. I can tell you're ready to go. Next week, that crash, so. That's how you. You're. You're.
Whatever.
Aren't you lost?
Yeah.
I'm hoping like livestock goes myself, I lead off every race, I have livestock going. Holding from the fence the backside, six bit tall, it's locked down. It's a good plan. Stop at a. No, well, the front yard is new like. Got the grain down. Left side is so. I'll start with blackberries, we had blackberries on the right until we built the. We'll probably start with blackberries. And I want to bring such a free tree sap there. There you go. Not a little bird. Yeah, that's the idea. So I wanted to celebrate, we have to take some eggs, we make some eggs now. Yeah, eventually that'd be a little blue. Cut out of our robe. Get a cover case. We don't have our followers. I mean, I'm. Yes. We never have. I'm only. I can't vote for activity or. It's like. But only if they're in Idaho. They're not. Can't be. But then you're trying to make either one. So the. They're just. I don't want to. John. That's. I had a cell, I had a cell. They're definitely going. Yeah. 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 Eric said, can we put Simon, I was like absolutely. Might be even the grain now.
Yeah.
We're on. Yeah. We have most. All right. We now. Then I could. All the way.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Except when I'm talking about.
Play a Patrick. And the really, really. Forget the million dollar view, she got a salary.
Yeah, I think it's. Oh, yeah. I never got invited. Yeah. Never been. That's. Yeah. 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 I'm sorry, six weeks. Don't understand what you're talking about. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's. No, but I just. Yeah. I guess. I don't know. There's. Yes, we. So. That's. She always come. That's just. Yeah. I thought. Yeah. So. I'm going to. Next week. Yeah. They're. Yeah. Man, I saw your. Yeah. All going. Yeah. Playing there. Question. Okay. When she. She's. Are you. Okay. Yeah. She never. Yeah, he's like two. Yeah. Yeah. One more. No, so it's something three, but each other is just wanting. It's about. Yeah. I did. Yeah. Yeah.
See how.
Very.
Nope. It's a mouse.
It keeps there. I think it's gonna be, that'd be a sound like. It'll be a car.
That's great. I'm sure. There's the five. I'm.
I'm outside. I'm sorry. You see. We look at. All the kind of. Yeah. Great. Yeah. We. Twenty two was, wasn't. By the. Yeah. We. Now. I. No. Just moving. It was like. Really finishing. Yeah. So we cut. Our. You know, like. I don't move it. So it's like last second. You don't. You're. We said that's four. Listen, that'd be interesting. We don't sleep. Rest.
She was. I am giving. They were. Has. Been. Yeah. Like. This. I don't. I was. How. He's taking. He said. I tried to have a situation. They had. I have to. Yeah. He said that. Had. They. Yeah. I'm. I'm. I'm.
Stuff like that, so until we can get all that taken into account, really happen, I find it is possible to have all the information. About us to determine. But it. No, or is it no, or say no. Oh, yeah. Governor.
We have the.
Everybody's. What do you think?
Well, we, we actually did not receive. So.
Yeah, I have received. In order to. Jamie and I have numerous conversations over the following things, you know, that he thought it was. I couldn't agree with more, I know. Like. Like. My. He wrote a. I'm. Right. You know, all. Oh. Thanks for. Yeah. This is. A great.
Karen. Slide the mic.
Yours.
Oh, now you can hear me. Okay, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order, welcome to our October meeting and, uh, this time I'd ask to stand and join us in. Pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, uh, at this time, uh, need the council to approve the agenda, Eric, any changes?
No, sir.
We need to make.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve these.
Okay. Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we've ever had anybody not approve the agenda. I don't know why we do that, actually vote on it, anyway, uh, it is approved, uh, at this time, we don't have anybody.
Karen, did anybody sign up?
Nobody signed up.
All right, well, we're going to move to item five and those are announcements that Eric will share with us.
Sure, uh, we have our weekly events coming up each Saturday, the Sweat It Out in the Park Unplugged and Living Local, uh, events that have become very popular. October nineteenth, we're having the, uh, Ball Ground Stream Cleanup, uh, that's gonna be from nine to twelve. Uh, we're also gonna do Ball Ground Highway from Howell Bridge down to Sharp Mountain Creek, uh, so that's gonna be part of that, anybody that wants to volunteer and join us is welcome. October nineteenth is the Chili Cookoff, that's from six to eight P M downtown, if anybody thinks they have a mean bowl of chili, if Ashley will raise her hand in the back, see her, she'll hook you up and, and get you in the Chili Cookoff. October twenty fifth from five to ten P M will be Spooktacular, and November eleventh at eleven A M will be our annual Veterans Day Ceremony.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to be here, I'm not gonna be able to be here to make chili, and I hope it works out. Uh, this time, let's, uh, go to our minutes from our September meeting. Council members have received, uh, see, the amendments have been received, are there any changes, any otherwise, a motion to approve the amendments?
I'm the commission ship for the minutes.
Okay, September twelfth, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Karen. You're, that's, how many more minutes will we make for us? She's retiring in December. So she, she's made minutes for how many years, thirty, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine years.
It's amazing.
Nice. Too many, well.
It's on the minutes. Okay, we'll move at this time to, uh, items under old business, and the first is to consider the adoption resolution of the capital improvement element, and Eric, you wanna give a summary of that?
Sure, the capital improvement element is simply the list of capital projects that are approved to receive impact fee dollars upon adoption of the ordinance. Uh, this covers many of our park projects, uh, also several of our roadway projects from the roundabout to the bypass to civic gruber realignment, uh, projects of that nature.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? I make a motion to approve. Okay, Dennis, second?
I'll second.
Nikki, any further discussion? A lot of things that we vote on, we've actually talked about at our, our work sessions the last week, uh, we do that usually every, um, every month.
This particular item has been discussed for over a year now, so. It's had a lot.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item with the second reading of the ordinance, um, you want to cover that, this concerns our impact fees.
Yes, sir, this ordinance, uh, lays out the legal groundwork for how we can spend the funds, uh, the percentages applied, the methodology for how we arrived at the dollar amounts that we can charge. Uh, the ordinance is required in order to be able to collect the fees.
Okay, this is something we're, that we're, we're getting ready to, uh, put into place, uh, to receive money for roads and streets and for parks.
Right.
Uh, for new construction, uh, new development here, so, at this time, can I have a motion to accept this second reading?
I would like to make a motion to, to second, second reading of the ordinance, please.
Okay.
Second.
Who wants to head to the second?
Second.
Chris, Christine, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that's in effect, that's now takes place tomorrow, correct? That's just second approval. All right, the third item under old business is, uh, the second reading of, of, it's a, it's a rezoning case of Fred Snell for Hunter Trail, you wanna share that? See, I look over there and don't see anything, and I, I don't know he's showing it behind us, even though it's in front of me, I don't see it either. Go ahead. Explain it.
Uh, this is the zoning application, uh, Roberts East, up on Roberts Lake Road, this is the second reading, comes to the city council with a recommendation for approval from the Cherokee Municipal Planning Commission. Uh, it's been discussed at work session, public hearing was held last month.
And was there a change since the first reading?
The change since the first reading was in addition, uh, to the ordinance of the rezone, the developer will be responsible for restoring the asphalt to pre-development conditions on Roberts Pass and Roberts Lake Road at the eighty percent buildout. Were there any other changes, Chris?
Um. There were changes to the site plan itself that addressed some of the comments that had come up, um, Road C, I believe, was extended to the property line, that was a, um, recommendation from staff. The previous plans for Roberts Lake Road that had been discussed and there were attempts made to, um, complete a new roadway, those plans have gone away, so that just came out of the site plan altogether, it's just showing what's there now. Um, in turn, the developer is going to dedicate Roberts Pass to the city and that will be the access point. Um, the buffer along the county properties was included, so, uh, just those sorts of amendments were made to the site plan to address the comments of staff in the county.
And I don't have the roadway slide on here, but also as a part of this, uh, there will be a, a traffic pattern change on Roberts Lake Road, so Roberts Lake Road will be two directional traffic. But coming north, or coming south, rather, on Roberts Lake from the development area, once you hit the end of the development, there'll be do not enter signs, so they are not allowed to exit to three seventy-two. So our residents that live on Roberts Lake Road will still have dual access in and out, but the residents that live on Roberts Lake Road in the new development area will only be able to exit by Roberts Pass. And those, that signage that we went over at the work session has all been ordered.
Okay, we did, we did discuss, uh, at the work session, very, all the details of, of the changes, so, um, so the se- the second reading of this, of this approval would be, um, include these things that we agreed on, that you covered. Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to accept the second reading?
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Second, proceed. Any further discussion, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that is, uh, zoning, the property was A G, and it'll go to residential, um, twenty and forty?
R twenty.
Oh, R twenty. So that's, um, the plans there for this property is how many houses?
Eighty.
Eighty, eighty houses. All right, at this time, we'll move on to the, uh, next item, and that is the, uh, second reading of the, what I call the golf cart ordinance. Uh, this is what we actually, uh, covered in, um, first approval was in September, uh, since that time, we, through our work session, we had decided that this is not something we're ready to move forward on until we actually do a lot more work on this ordinance. So at this time, though, because it's on the agenda for the second reading, I'll, I'll call for the, uh, approval of the second reading for this golf cart, golf cart ordinance, and is anybody going to approve that? Okay, so at this time, can I ask for a motion to deny?
Or it can just die for the lack of a motion. It's what's on the table.
We'll, uh, this is something based on the, after our work session, we felt like we needed to, to not move forward on this particular ordinance until we had, uh, done more work on it, and, uh, for that reason, since nobody, we're not getting to vote on the second, uh, reading here, then it, it is now, it stopped. So we won't be acting on it. Uh, we, we do hope to be acting on it in a few months, if we're gonna do it. Uh, update it.
Right, and just for clarity, in that few month process, under Georgia law, it is illegal to drive carts on the roadway. Uh, in order for it to be legal, we have to have a local ordinance, uh, so until there is a local ordinance, it is, it is not legal to drive on the highway.
Okay. Move on to the next item, this is another second reading, and this is the, uh, alcohol ordinance to allow open containers certain places downtown and certain, certain dates, um, you wanna summarize that?
Yes, sir, this is, uh, open container ordinance for an entertainment district, it allows open container of alcohol between Friday, four to nine P M, and Saturdays from noon to nine P M. Uh, it's allowed in the mapped areas only, uh, any of the restaurants that are gonna serve to go must attend training with the police department so they fully understand the ordinance and the boundaries, uh, so that they can help answer those questions. Uh, sixteen ounce cup is the requirement, there'll be an increase in the license fee of two hundred and fifty dollars annually, uh, the city will provide stickers that was agreed on at the planning retreat that will go on the cups, and, uh, the entertainment district itself will follow this map. Uh, there will be a Q R code as part of the sticker on the cup, so that, uh, any customer can just scan that and know exactly where they can and cannot go with an open container.
This will also include special events, correct?
Special events, so getting into the special events permit, they will have a little bit different of a map.
Right.
On special events, because in this one, uh, it excludes the parking lot, but if the events in the parking lot, we'll amend it to. To be there, but yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I do have a question, when it, and, and at what, what time is this gonna be, what day is this gonna be?
I'm sorry, good point, it'd be January first, because we need to give the folks time to order their materials, our staff to get the stickers together, them to schedule their training with the chief of police, uh, so there's, there's legwork, they don't automatically get to just do it, they have to come and, and go through the chief's program and be certified to serve.
And this, and this district, this map shows, it's called entertainment, it's shaped like an E. You can see that. But that's, again, that's, that's initial, what we're initially. But that's, again, that's, that's initial, what we're initially, what we're doing, it might, it might change later. But ours is first, first moved to, to allow that on, on weekends, Fridays and Saturdays. And this is the, this is what being put forth and this is what, we had the first approval, first reading of, approval of the first reading last month. And so at this time, may I ask the council to, let's have a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the alcohol ordinance and being effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Motion, uh, Net? Second?
Second.
Christine? Any further discussion? We've talked a lot at work sessions and... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that, that's proved and it will again, take place beginning next year officially. So that will, that's over and above. We have some events that we allow open containers already, but this is just be normal weekends, Fridays and Saturdays initially. So hopefully that will work out. All right, next item for us to, under old business is the, concerns the changing the annual salary of council members and mayor. I haven't had mine changed in twenty something years. But this is something that we've been discussing, we've had the first reading last September, last meeting. Ball ground right now, for, for elected officials, we receive by far the least in this county. And it is, it does kind of bring it, it also then raises, it will raise the amount and you have to sign up to run for, for office too. So, but anyway, Eric, you want to give a little more detail on it?
Yes, sir. The, uh, just quick announcement for the morning, we've got a large segment of the city right now without water. The guys were repairing a small leak on Old Dawsonville Road and so they started working on it, entire twenty foot stick of eight inch pipe burst lengthwise. So we have all of Mountain Brook out of water right now.
It's not, my phone's been going out.
That's, that's you, so, uh, they're, they're working it and, uh, that was it, so I apologize for being distracted. Proposed salary increases, this has been advertised as required in the legal organ, total of six times. It is to move salaries for the city council to forty-eight hundred dollars a year and to the office of mayor of seven thousand eight hundred dollars a year. This is up from whopping twenty-five dollars. And it is still, I believe, the lowest in Cherokee County or second lowest in Cherokee County.
Lowest.
So, that's, uh, there's a lot of work that goes into it and it was time. This does not impact anyone sitting up here, it cannot take effect. It may in the future, but it cannot take effect until following the next general election.
January twenty twenty.
January twenty-six.
Six. Twenty twenty-six.
So twenty-seven it'll take effect.
Right. Well, the next election for us is January, or twenty twenty-five, so it would go into, right, January twenty twenty-six.
Go in twenty-six and then the qualifying fees, January of twenty-seven.
Okay, can I go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the second reading?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the increase in salaries.
Right. Motion made, second. Any further comments that we, given the understanding that it doesn't take place until twenty-six? We have to, see, we don't have an election this year. And it can't take place until after an election takes place and the next election would be in November twenty-five. So that's when, if...
In addition to this salary increase, you can't increase your qualifying fees unless your salaries are increased. And that was one of the main reasons that we wanted to bring this up to you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's officially accepted now. And that is, uh, that's the last item under old business. So we'll move now to, we've got two items on new business. First is a memorandum, understanding MOU between city and the county and has to do with, with money we're going to be spending to, to share building the sidewalk from, from Old Dawsonville Road over to Mountain Brook North. Give some more information, Eric.
That's it, uh, the project itself will be a cost share between the city and the county. The city will be in for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents, with Cherokee County contributing nine hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and nineteen cents. If you remember when we had this on the briefing report last month, the city share, I think was seven hundred and, had seven hundred and thirty thousand that they were looking for the city. So we met with the county and this is the new price and be good to get that pedestrian connectivity.
That's a, that's an important part of our master plan is having pedestrian access. And right now, a, a big neighborhood over there, for you to, Mountain Brook North, isn't, isn't connected to the rest of the, of the city and this, this will, this will allow that, which is be good. Okay, then can we move on, a motion to approve this MOU?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed, so good. What's the timeframe, Eric?
It'll go before the board of commissioners next week. If they approve it, then we should be out to bid by mid-November. Have a contractor selected in December, begin work in January, February time period.
All right, the next item has to do with, we've got some land exchange over here where they're just building a new road lined up with North Ridge and between even Groover's and Groover Street and Gilmer Ferry. You want to share that exchange?
Sure, last month, council authorized the advertising of the potential land swap. Surveys and appraisals have been available for review here at city hall for any citizen that wanted to review them. This allows us to establish a, a direct connection between North Ridge, full intersection. So many of our intersections in the city are offset. But this gives us a, a direct access and helps our, our downtown traffic movement. It is identical square footage and identical assessment.
Okay. I get a motion to approve this exchange?
I make a motion that we approve the exchange.
Okay. And that will, that will be done immediately, right?
Is it okay just to approve this change or do they need to approve me to sign the transfer documents? You to approve execution of the documents?
If we could ask for a vote on the approval and then ask for a second vote authorizing me to execute the transfer documents.
Would it be easier to change the motion?
I think at this point, it's just, however you want to do it.
That's fine.
At this point, since you already got a motion out there, I think just go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, let's move to additional, um...
A move that would be authorized, Eric, to execute a motion?
Make, make the motion to execute the documents for the exchange.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions for Daryl? All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Now this was going to be effective as of tomorrow?
We'll have, we'll have to set up a closing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. And that's the last item on our agenda under new business. So now it's Eric's turn to update us over the last month of activity here in the city.
Chief, chief?
Yes, thank you. We are ending our first thirty day cycle with our new computer program. So I'll have some good numbers for the next meeting, but we are, the, the program is great. It's a new reporting system which will give us more accurate information on the calls that we're responding to in our incidents. So really excited about that. I think everybody's seen the devastation with the hurricane that is all over the, the south and we were lucky here in the city. I do want to acknowledge that the staff here in the city was tremendous. I was out, but city manager was out, the public works guys were out, even the city staff, the clerks were here. It was amazing, everybody just came in, rolled their sleeves up and just got stuff done. We had very little damage considering some trees down. Mostly everybody stayed off the roadways, which made it easier for us to maneuver. We were able, I was able to reach out to the, to the local landfills and to some of the larger trucking companies and they were able to divert and they were also able to delay some of the large trucks, which, which helped us out a lot. So that was good, appreciate everybody's cooperation with that. Our last event, the, the event over the weekend, Ball Ground Rocks was, was good. Very, traffic was very easy, good crowds, good people, no, no issues to report. We're excited for our spectacular, our Veterans Day program and we are already talking about our Christmas parade, going over the route that they're going to be doing and lining up security for that. Looking forward to working with our vendors and our partners for the open container. Not only will we cover the alcohol laws and everything, but we'll also do some de-escalation and make sure that everybody's in a safe environment, if they have questions or anything, we, we want to try to de-escalate as much as possible. So we're excited, looking to wrap things up this year and spring forward into next year, so we're already making plans.
Jamie, what's the, I'm sorry, chief, what's the status on the state certification?
Because of the hurricane, the class was delayed, but I'm happy to announce it's a week from today. So we will go through that and you will get certifications that, a week from today. But it would have already been, but with the hurricane, they had to delay the class because of travel. But I'm telling you, we're, we're all so close and it's so frustrating that we can't put our hands on it. We're getting there, we will get there, I promise.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
We closed the month of September with a total of two point five six nine million cash on hand. General fund was, did surprisingly well for this time of year. We are just ending our non-revenue season. You see the revenue and expenses for September. Total revenues of five hundred and ninety-four thousand against expenses of five hundred and four thousand. Year to date with our revenue at one point four million and our expenses at one point two seven nine million. Administration, the onsite portion of the audit is wrapped up and they're doing offsite work now. We're working on the capital improvement plan update. We have some very expensive projects yet to complete in this update, but it's time to bring it back to council. We have five years remaining on our plan, but have accomplished almost all of the tasks on it. So we're going to come back to the elected body with some lower level projects, smaller than bypass, roundabout things that are taking, taking time. We got some disappointing news this week on our insurance renewals, we're looking at premium increases of twenty-five percent this year. We have a meeting tomorrow and start going back through, see what our options are. Any way that we can save money there, but yet still be good for retention for our employees, but also for recruitment as well. Also beginning to prepare for budget season. On our capital projects, on the roundabout, everything is back to GDOT, waiting on their final comments. We're ready to bid as soon as we get the approval. We are still waiting on two easements, but it, project will be bid whether we have those easements or not. They can be obtained later in the construction phase. See, everything that's green now is the easements that have been obtained, the yellow area is where we're still lacking. On the three seventy-two spur and bypass, still making good progress there. But we are having is growth continues to hit the area, we have four potential developments. Two in the city, two in the county that could impact the route. So we're working with GDOT, property owners in the county to try and make sure we preserve the route that's being engineered for the bypass. Mountain Brook sidewalk extension, y'all approved the MOU this evening. City allocates the one seventy-five, the county the nine oh six, and our original obligation was seven thirty-one. Roads and streets, we're scheduled to pave Grogan Street on the eighteenth. The contract requires it to be complete by the thirty-first, but they should be out there on the eighteenth. Groover and civic realignment, again, want to stress, these are only concepts. We've been reporting that we were looking at concepts for improvements at this intersection as well as for a new outline of the parking area at the community center. None of these are in stone, but this is one of the examples of what the new parking area could look like and traffic pattern could look like. Just makes it a, a civic a one-way coming into Grover. Again, none of this is in stone. We're going to meet with the folks at the Animal Hospital, at the Masonic Lodge, at the bakery, at the new church down there on the corner in that building, get everybody's input on that new traffic flow, proposed traffic flow and how it will impact them. Another option would be a mini roundabout in that area. The parking remains pretty much the same. So these are what we will be sitting down with our customers on and then also our engineer and, and seeing what's the best for traffic in that area. Old Canton Road on Storm Drain, I'm sure you've seen the pictures of the heavy rain where everything continues to go right across Bird Hill. We've tried several times over the year to make this better. We're going to bite the bullet and we're just going to move, if you see the catch basin back here in the corner, right here, we're going to move that out to this area where it is actually in the curb line. Because as the water's coming down Old Canton, it's moving too fast to make this corner and come over into this box properly. It's way better than it used to be, but we can make it better than what it is. Mount Street Storm Drain, that project has been completed, already full of leaves. We had a very positive meeting today with the owners of the new potential downtown parking lot site. We're putting together a formal proposal that'll be sent to them for another leased parking area. This does two things, it gives us a lot more parking downtown. It also removes festivals from the Old Dawsonville Groover Street corner. Puts everything over here, turns that into parking with no longer a need to close Old Dawsonville Road. So that'd be a big help, with the exception of Christmas parade. That section still has to be closed one time a year for the Christmas parade. Water and sewer, we've been talking for several months about this parcel up on Old Canton Road. We have dropped the contract on that property. Working with the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. This will go before their board at the end of this month, but what we're proposing now is we sat down with Pulte Homes and Pulte is going to pay to replace an aging water line in the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority system. The water authority will install it. And instead of us spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get our secondary connection to Mountain Brook, which would have been very, very helpful this evening, it'll cost us nothing. So they will pay for this blue extension here, the water authority will handle that. Then down here at the bottom, this very small connection here is where the water line will be extended in to connect to Mountain Brook. Our Mountain Brook customers should see an increase of about eighty pounds of pressure at their highest elevations, which will also assist... Uh, which will also assist with fire flow, although we're always clear that is not our primary mission. Our mission is, is drinking water. Water service line inventory, our inventory is complete and was accepted by EPA last week. We are now in a thirty-day timeline where we have a lot of other administrative requirements that we have to meet. Uh, but we should be in good shape and, and put this to bed for another year. Other notable issues on water, we're still conducting the rate assessment. Our license to operate the system has been submitted to EPD for a ten-year extension. We're reviewing and assessing the new PFOA and PFAS rules. For folks not familiar, that's your forever chemicals, everything used to waterproof your sofa and your car seats. And, and Teflon for your frying pans that has leached into the soil over the years and is now coming back in groundwater. And causing a lot of health issues and damage. Uh, very fortunate that our well on its first run tested at zero. Uh, so there is no indications right now, but we still have a lot to do. We have some nearby cities that are being required to go to a re- reverse osmosis filtration system to remove that from their water. And that is something that we simply couldn't afford to do. Uh, it would take more water for reverse osmosis than we can produce, so it would effectively shut our well down. Our security cameras, uh, for downtown have come in, uh, the ones that we'll be putting in. Uh, these will look at some key infrastructure. We will have ins- uh, training on installation next week and software the following week. Recreation and parks, uh, town looks, I think, best it's ever looked for fall. Uh, can't wait to see it for Christmas. But, uh, hats off to Ashley and hats off to our downtown businesses who have all jumped in and, and really made things look good. Also had the scarecrow invasion going on. It's the most I've seen downtown as well, so again, great participation in the community. Um, we will be requesting a committee meeting of parks. Uh, have put together the new proposed rates for our facilities, from basketball to baseball, soccer, what have you. Uh, attendance at the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference, Ashley just got back from that today. It was held in Atlanta for the first time. I think she said there were about ten thousand attendees from across the country. So a chance to network and learn what a lot of other entities were doing. Uh, community center is removed. Uh, that was something, a lot of good times in the community there and was built by the community. They kinda outlived its, its usefulness and the area looks much improved. Uh, so ready for our parks expansions. On community development. They've been working on the Anderson Lusk annexation and rezoning, the Covington and Thornton annexation and rezoning. Blackley Station or Pulte, that's the one that's gonna be doing the water line extension out there the other side of Mountain Brook. Uh, Pendleton and Smith Douglas Lusk, uh, they're in Stormwater Review. That's out here on Gilmer Ferry. Heritage Towns, uh, their review is complete and permits issued. That's gonna be on Groover Street behind where the community building was. Cowart Heights and Old Mill Phase Three, uh, clearing and grading permits have been issued. That's something that was zoned back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight time period. On commercial, excuse me, you got Mosaic Beef O' Brady's is underway with construction south of Howell Bridge. Model Railroad Folks, uh, their building is in, uh, plan review now. They're gonna be back behind Subway up on Ball Ground, or Canton Highway. Uh, got the linen manufacturer that is going in there. And then Magby Lumber has for now dropped to their showroom and is just doing the building expansion. Uh, also reviewing the concept plans for Civic and Groover. Meeting with the individual interested in a shopping center development. Uh, bypass impacts, and again, uh, property, the Faraba, Lusk, Covington and Cagle Properties. Uh, all have potential conflicts with the bypass, so working through them. We also had a staff member attend occupation tax training and learned a lot from that. Be implementing some new procedures here. And then closeout work on Linwood, uh, three seventy-two and Lenar, preparing to accept that infrastructure. Building permits issued for September were at nineteen. That's seventy total for the year. Active development report, not much change other than to add heritage at sixteen approved units and sixteen permits pulled. This is the map that shows you the general location of all of the, uh, projects in the approval process now.
Eric, would you go back to the, the previous slide to see the number of, um, homes? Is that three hundred and two?
Yes, ma'am.
Of, uh, new homes coming in? Thank you.
Yes. This is just a recap of where those units are and again, how many at each one, where they are, like a hundred and forty on the Cagle property behind UAC. It's zoned and under contract. Doesn't mean that the development is imminent. It's, it's zoned, it's under contract, it's been under contract a number of times. Uh, last thing tonight is not a piece of city business, but you're gonna get a lot of questions on it. Work is getting ready to start on the McGraw Ford battery storage station. Uh, this is a Georgia power project that'll be very visible. They're going to begin storing excess energy in batteries onsite so they can release it back into the grid during peak demand times. If you're familiar, on Cones Creek Road where the big Georgia Power substation is, this is going right behind it. Um, the next slide here, this shows what a battery unit looks like. There'll be probably close to a thousand of these out there. Uh, they've been conducting meetings with, uh, county fire and whatnot, make sure they have emergency response plans in place. But these are very high-tech battery storage units. They're all remotely monitored. Um, if they start to overheat or whatnot, they know it. And can send response teams to handle whatever is there. But it's something, again, it is not in the city, but it's something we will be getting a lot of calls on once they begin clearing out there and hauling all these big battery units in and around the city.
Is there a trademarked line?
Ball Ground Rocks.
That's right. Right, any questions of Eric? Yeah, again, uh, in the past, in the past when we had council meetings. Uh, we actually didn't meet more often than just, just the council meeting. We, so that's why on our Tuesday you see council comments because, uh, used to, that, that's when council members would, you know, would channel me in and say, and tell us things and ask things that, right now we do that in the work session. So, uh, we don't, we won't spend a whole lot of time on, on council comments, but, uh, or my, or my comment. But I might note that, uh, I wanted to share with the, the council and staff that, uh, I met with Stephanie Joyner, uh, yesterday. And we are going to go forward with getting the, uh, the historic preservation ordinance put together. And Chris, uh, she's gonna be reaching out to you for some, some updates on, on, on the proposed ordinance. But this is something that, you know, Ball Ground is the second, is the second oldest city in Cherokee County. And, uh, we don't, we do not have a preservation ordinance and so we're, we want it. And we're, hopefully we'll get it, uh, put into place in the next few months, so. But again, uh, the, we have a committee, uh, and Stephanie will actually pull that together and, and try to get us moving on it. So I just wanted to share that with, with council. Vicky, have anything you wanna bring up?
I would like to invite everybody. I know November seems like it's a long way away, but it's not really. Um, November the eleventh for our veterans ceremony, uh, at, at the Veterans Memorial. For everyone to please come out and show your support to our veterans and our military. It will be, of course, on November the eleventh at eleven AM in, in, uh, Honor of Armistice. Armistice? I always mispronounce it.
Armistice.
And I don't mean to, I don't mean to do it any, but, um, anyway. So we will be there. I hope y'all will.
Dennis?
Thank you to everybody who turned out for the Blue Star, Gold Star dedication, September twenty-eighth. Karen and Jenny and Dennis and Evelyn and of course Annette and Vicky and so many members of the Ball Ground Garden Club. Couldn't have been possible without it. Um, nor would it be possible, had been possible without the work of, uh, the city public works employees, the city police officers. Um, Ashley and Eric. And, um, it, it was very well attended and we really appreciate it. And, uh, I'm sure if Dawn were up here, she would thank you too. It was, uh, it was a great event. If you haven't seen it, it's in the, uh, Botanical Garden. Uh, walking towards the, um, Police Building on the backside. And we're, there's not that many around that have a Blue Star and a Gold Star, um, memorial markers. So thank goodness our Botanical Garden had the foresight to put something like that together. Thank you.
Chris?
No, just thank you all for coming this evening. It's good seeing you all.
Annette?
Thank you for coming. Yeah, that, that, um, that dedication of, of the ceremony was, was awesome.
You attended the, uh, GMA district meeting, correct?
Yes, and I was gonna tell you all about it. I will, one of these days, I'm gonna get it. I'll put my notes together and email you.
Wasn't that, we had the same, same time as our work session, the same day?
It's a, it's the daytime though.
Yeah.
It was in the middle of the day. It, it's so fast that the updates, like, you can't really even get what they're saying. But, um, but it's good to network with the, um, everyone in our district.
Well, thanks for going.
And I found out they have, they have electric car parking at GMA. So next time, I'm gonna go into the electric car parking and charge my car along that.
Okay. Well.
That's what I got for taking the stairs.
That's downtown, that's downtown next to the Capitol.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an easy way to get to, easy place to get to.
Sir, if I could add one more thing, they have been able to re-valve a good bit of the system, so they've restored Mountain Brook to water. Uh, we still do have, uh, Calusa Lake out, uh, but they did get those two hundred and some units back in water. So they'll be out there most of the night, but just wanted to say too, and appreciate the comments on public works. But they're probably our most overlooked group at a lot of times. You don't realize until the water is out. But they're out there working every night, keeping it on. And it's rare that our folks see an interruption.
Those guys are just awesome.
They did a good job.
Great group of guys.
For our Mountain Brook residents, when you get home, you might have a little air. It's okay. Just let the faucet run. It'll burp a little bit. It's gonna be okay.
Do we need it while on water?
You should not need because they were able to control it through valving and turn you back on.
Mr. Mayor and Council, um, last week we had control chaos here. We had a bunch of people dropping off supplies and, uh, everything from bottled water to clothing, uh, for the people of the hurricane. And this lady right here took it upon herself to arrange, it was, it was chaos. And she went out there and made sure it was organized and made sure that people didn't run into each other. And again, just something else that she took control of, and if she hadn't, it would all be still out there right now. She won't take credit for it, but she really took it upon herself. I'll pay for that later.
Well, conservative, let me tell you, it was very humbling. I called, uh, Karen Hawkins and said, can you get me some garden club people to come and volunteer? And I called Nancy, so Nancy Madden and said, can you get some lines club? People showed up that I did not even know to come and help, to sort and take those donations. And they went directly to a little town in, in, in Carolina, it's called Old Fort. You can look it up. It's a little town very much like we used to be. They got an elementary school that have three hundred and sixty-eight students in it. And they have a mayor council and they have their own sewer system and water system. But it's a little town, little population, a little over eight hundred, what we were, we were seven hundred and fifty, I think, in our first, um, census when I went to work here. So I can really identify with that little town and what had something happened with Ball Ground back in those days. To how those people are and how they feel, I can't imagine. And so I'll thank everybody, my helpers that showed up and, and went to work and, uh, rolled up their sleeves. And we were able to send a thirty-foot trailer up there twice. We helped pack two eighteen-wheelers, their trailers, and then a couple of fifteen-foot trailers. So right now they have all the supplies they need because they have no place to store them. So we'll probably do another drive and maybe some later on down the road because those folks. And anybody that complains about your water being out tonight, y'all can go ahead and tell me to go home now. If you complain about that, I'm gonna pray for you. Because those people up there are not gonna have water for months. Uh, I'm sorry, just keep talking, but I have to, this lady pulled up on Friday afternoon. And she said, they were in a big, big car and said, I just want to thank y'all for what you're doing. She said, I'm from, I'm not pronouncing it, Santa Doha or something like that. It's just outside of Ashtray. And she said, I'm not gonna have power or water for at least six months. And she said, I have come down to stay with my parents. And I just want to thank y'all for what you're doing. She had a Hart County tag on that car, so they evidently had drove down from Hartland, had heard about it on social media. Again, people had put it out on social media. Media was amazing. I know the other towns are doing it, but I think I wish it was special. So, um, that was just, it was just very rewarding to know. Those people up there live a whole, totally different life than what we do. And they were just so appreciative of, of what we did, so.
Can I go away when it happens again?
Take up your time. Well, I got a little plan up my sleeve, so I'll, yeah, we'll see what comes next.
I'm convinced when she retires, she's gonna drive up to that town and say.
I am, I really am.
Well, thanks for what you did.
Well, it's, you know, it's just the right thing to do.
What?
That was.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
There's a link up in, I think, uh.
You have anything to bring up?
No, sir. Let's end on a happy note. Karen just announced.
Okay, at this time, uh, let me ask, anybody wants to address the council here?
Just a quick question. If, if motorized carts are not gonna be allowed from this point until regulations are placed. We don't want to overburden public safety. How is the city gonna publicize that?
Well, I think most everybody's got the impression is the department, contrary to popular belief, has not issued a single citation. But they have been educating the people with carts that they're not to be on the road. And the department will continue to do that, um, but there may have been misunderstanding in the law, but it has never been legal.
I concur. It's the best way to answer, absolutely.
But you, you've actually been involved with a good many people explaining.
Yes, we're starting to see some repeated offenders, which is a little discouraging. Uh, it's, again, it, it's not that we're turning a blind eye. What we're doing is educating. Because the false sense of allowing it, uh, took place and, and, and we do take some, uh, burden on that, so we're trying to educate. But, uh, this, this is to a point where it's going to be a public safety issue until it's addressed properly. So we're asking everybody to keep the carts off the roadway. Um, council understands that it is a request and until it's fulfilled, whether yes, we're gonna do it or no or not, it, it remains illegal.
Okay. Anyone else want to address council?
Is there any effort to curb some of this rapid development in the same town? It just seems like the town is going up really. It just seems like the town's going up really quickly, which is great for the city, but I don't know about some negatives to it.
Well, of course, we're putting in impact fees, that's going to add two...
Three.
$3,000 for every new building or house. To me, that may slow a little bit, but, you know, it's also has to do with, sometimes things move up fast and then they slow down when the, kind of, the economy starts going bad, but I, we don't, we're, we're in agreement that we're not, we're not wanting to lose our own sense of place here. We want, you know, I tell people, my line is either you're growing or you're dying, and we want to grow, but we don't want to grow where we, so fast that it, that we lose our unique sense of place. And, you know, as being on edge of metro Atlanta, I know of other cities that have, in the metro Atlanta area, that used to be like Ball Ground, but now they look like all the others, you can't, you can't tell they're unique, and that's, even though we want, we want more people, we still don't want it to, us to end up looking like every other little, every other suburban city. But we, I think we're, we're a little more cautious now on the building we allow.
We're picky, and I would say we've actually, the new council has probably denied more than what's been approved of people that have approached the city for developments and stuff that we, you know, pushed back because we didn't feel they would be a fit for the city. So, I'm, you know, you're never going to stop it completely, but we try to be, try to be picky with what we, with what we do and, you know, what we bring into the city.
Well, we're, right now we're growing about, what, 7% a year?
The important thing on our product is to make sure that we do it the right way also. We just don't expect anybody and everybody that comes our way just for the sake of it. We want to make sure it's the right way we live here too, so, you know, don't want it to get out of control or anything.
We don't want a Woodstock.
I'm sure at some point they have similar segments, right, but growth seems inevitable and...
We'll just build gates, and then we get to about 6,000 people, we won't, no, I'm just kidding. We won't let anybody else in.
Do not, yeah.
I'm just kidding. When I, growing up, Ball Ground was bigger than Woodstock. Woodstock got a sewer system put in, and Ball Ground turned it down in the 1960s, and once they had that, then they started growing, but Woodstock is so much closer to Atlanta that growth is always going to be a lot more. But, again, I let me reiterate that I want us to maintain that, our unique sense of place here, not look like every other place in the metro area, so that's just my opinion.
The quaintness here is the most amazing thing, because even in growth, you maintain the quaintness, and I think that's what everybody loves about it.
Anybody else? Okay, well then, at this time, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm Michael, I should trigger.
Second.
Good job.
Are we in favor?
Aye.
We're leaving. This may, we're running in 50 minutes.